Your Plaques offices will have a specific code that will be assigned to this and sort of set up in their computer system. So if you're already getting a breakdown of those taxes that go to various places, as I'm sure you would with the litigation tax, at least breakdown.
It does.
This documentation, this would also have some specific code within your system.
No, it just says designated splits during visitation. So we may be ready.
I'm sure your departments could tell you how much time and effort is spent.
If I may, just a couple of things that the statute states about it. Number one, you will have to appoint a county records commission.
I thought we did it.
And I think there's a person, but I'm not sure. There's a commission.
Yeah. Is it a commission or a meeting?
Yeah, yeah, it's me.
You have to have a commission.
You have to have a committee.
It's a county records commission.
Is it a commission, which is commission is different than a committee? Could you please explain now the name, the difference in a committee or a commission?
The commission would be appointed as other members of commissions that you appoint. County mayor would make recommendations and board would endorse. It's not a problem, it's just something that you will need to do. And then the second item that I wanted to mention is the statute does require that any fees designated that are collected through this must be exclusively for duplicating store and maintaining your records for our office. It is restricted from, I think that was pointed out.
That's what I was saying, yes. And then the...
Call room?
Name, Floyd?
Yes.
Russell Ray?
No.
Corey Denport?
Yes.
Karen Ashford?
Yes.
Jim Bush?
Yes.
Greg Mitchell?
Yes.
Grant Brandon?
Yes.
Randy Gannon?
Yes.
Ken Denport?
Yes.
Ronnie Mahack?
Yes.
901B.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm going to move on to the third resolution. And it should be the capital improvements plan. Is that the next one?
Yeah.
I find this one a little timely, given the discussions that took place previously regarding capital improvement needs. Your county commission already has capital improvement needs. We've heard those today, and a few of you hear them every time that it comes up. It's in everybody's budget. This simply requires the, this resolution would require the commission to put together a capital improvement plan. So a written, a written list that would show you the priorities, so you could rank your needs, and as funding came available, you could fund them accordingly, or whatever matter you saw fit. But it would give you one listing of all the capital needs throughout the county. This resolution and this improvement plan will help in longer places. One in one of the next resolutions I'm going to recommend. But it will also assist the county with several other grant opportunities that may be out there or other funding that do require a formal listing for capital improvement plan. So I propose that to the commission.
Is there any case in this if it's not followed with your punishment if you don't do it?
No, sir.
In fact, there is?
No, sir.
I did a little research on this, and it just, it's just like what she said, it does seem timely. Basically, this is the advantages. It creates an orderly and systematic planning for acquisition financing and use of capital improvements. And it says it provides a more effective evaluation of alternatives and solution in the crisis decision process. And it allows for more hidden debt consideration of hidden costs, which affect the operating budgets, provides for funding of projects on a priority basis. It provides stable payments and tax rates over a period of time. And it says it involves multiple fiscal years for project completion. And then, but everything on it, it just basically says, it says it will promote better planning and installation of construction since the acquisition will be before crisis time. If you'll hear that, everything on this talks about crisis, crisis, crisis. And it just seems like we've been in a crisis for so long, we don't know what normal is like. I would like to kind of see what normal is like myself. And it says the disadvantages, and this is the worst part, is what Russell was probably talking about. It requires time and effort.
What I was talking about is if they were to...
Yeah, yeah.
If you didn't do it.
Right, but this goes along with it requires, well, in my opinion, if this is what it says, it's disadvantages, and maybe it's not what we were talking about, but this is the only disadvantage that it has, is it does require time and effort.
There is no financial penalty for not implementing this. However, if an opportunity presents itself, a grant, state dollars, or any other revenue sources that we find that require that, the probability of losing out on it for not having that capital plan in place and being able to immediately present could have you lose out on future dollars. It's information you need to have anyway at your fingertips instead of spreading along 10 or 15 different department budgets.
Well, discussion. Any other questions? You have a motion?
I made the motion to accept the resolution.
That's fair.
Call room?
Name, Floyd?
Yes.
Russell Ray?
Yes.
Corey Denport?
Yes.
Karen Ashford?
No.
Jim Bush?
Yes.
Greg Mitchell?
Yes.
Grant Brandon?
Yes.
Randy Gannon?
Yes.
Ken Denport?
Yes.
Ronnie Mahack?
Yes.
901B.
Thank you, commissioners. If we can, I want to change the order. The resolution in front of you now is a resolution adopting provisions of the County Powers Relief Act of 2006. The resolution following that, which is the last one, says resolution to amend the Quest of Action of Private Act of 2013, Chapter 23. Let's discuss that. I think the first, I believe the other resolutions are going to require a little more discussion from us. Just a minute to get this page adjusted up. It begins where as on April 15th, 2013, Cannon County adopted hotel motel tax by private act. All right. Cannon County does currently have hotel motel tax. That is currently generates $3,972 as of your 2017 audited financial statements. Currently, those dollars go into the general fund, but are then immediately transferred to the Chamber of Commerce. And all revenue, all of that revenue is earmarked for tourism through the Chamber of Commerce. The resolution you have before you will eliminate that transfer of the entire tax to the Chamber of Commerce. It will hold the Chamber of Commerce harmless in that it has a section in there that's going to dedicate amount not to exceed the 2018 funds. So let's assume that 2018 generated the same amount of money, $3,972. That amount, whatever it is for 2018, will continue to go to the Chamber of Commerce for future years. So they are guaranteed and held harmless for the revenue they're currently receiving off your hotel motel tax. My recommendation for this resolution is it's needed due to the county's current financial status. Tourism really doesn't need to be the first thing you're focusing your efforts on and your money's on it. And it will also allow for consideration of local, state, and federal funding to county, to the county unrestricted general fund. Again, if we have opportunities that come in, those monies can go to the general fund first unrestricted, and then at a later date, if you choose to send those more to the county, to the Chamber of Commerce for tourism if you can. That is not your top priority here in this county. I've heard it from many of your county commissioners, I've heard it sitting here in this meeting, meetings I've attended. And I feel this is necessary for the commission to transfer these dollars and any future dollars coming in for this to your unrestricted general fund.
So the first year they get it after they add a tax?
They will continue to get, let's say, let's just take the number, the 3,900, $4,000. Let's say 2018, that generated number was $4,000. They will continue to receive that monies. They can continue to budget for that. Chamber of Commerce gets it out of your general fund budget. The additional dollars that may be generated by this hotel motel tax will go into your general fund unrestricted and can be used for any source necessary.
So if we split five thousand, we get a thousand and four?
Correct.
And then they leave?
Correct.
They get four thousand, there we go.
Correct.
Even if it doesn't generate the 4,000?
Not to exceed the 2018 funds. You can make it lower than that.
No, ma'am, not my question. If the taxes don't generate the $4,000 per year, is the county general fund on the hook for the whole 4,000, or do they get what it brought in?
Again, what it brought in.
And we won't get that.
But it will not exceed the $4,000, the $2,018 now.
And that forever?
Correct. Until a future change, until a future county commission changes that.
Yeah, I made my motion.
Second?
Second, the motion. Corey.
Corey, Corey May. Second.
Call room?
Name, Floyd? Yes.
Russell Ray?
Yeah.
Corey Denport?
Yes.
Karen Ashford?
Yes.
Jim Bush?
Yes.
Greg Mitchell?
Yes.
Grant Brandon?
Yes.
Randy Gannon?
Yes.
Ken Denport?
Yes.
Ronnie Mahack?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. And in keeping with the theme, again, this final resolution, the whole goal of everything Berry Group has done for the commission, and will continue to do in our research, is to provide additional dollars and to help the county be prepared for where you are now and the growth that is coming to this county. This particular resolution focuses more closely on that growth that is, it's already here, you're going to just continue to see it as the surrounding counties of Rutherford, Coffey, Wilson, those continue to grow, and you get the leover from those counties. This is a fund, this schools adequate facilities fee that's being proposed would fund capital expenditures for the public school system. Currently, Rutherford County and its surrounding counties, Wilson, Coffey, and Bedford, already have this in place. In the historical review, Wilson, Coffey, and Bedford implemented it because of the overflow they were getting from Rutherford County. When I started comparing the consideration for this, Woodbury, in my mind, is similar to Bellville. It's just right there across the county line, it's a quaint little town, and it's got a lot to offer, just like Woodbury does. You're right across the line, it's quaint, you've got a lot to offer. And people are noticing that. Murfreesboro is now becoming much more like a metropolitan Nashville than the little hometown that I grew up in. You're still that little hometown, and people want to come here. But with that, it's going to come a lot of need and draw on your infrastructure, that you need to be ahead of the game for and not trying to catch up after which. You already have a need in your school system. We've heard that the two roofs you're going to need to be replaced. They've got other needs that they want, they've got other wants that they have in addition to the needs that they have. And that's just with the population you've got now. With new houses, new children coming in, that's just going to continue to increase. This resolution would impose a $1 per square foot on new residential development, that's heating or cooled area. This would be on new homes, new apartments, and new mobile homes. This would not affect any current structure that's already there, any add-ons to that. This is simply new residential construction. I'm going into a little more detail on this so you can understand the process. But it is a process we would develop after this in conjunction with the mayor's office and following some of the, following the processes already in place. These particular counties are close to you. This is by no means the only counties that have this development tax. Half of the fee, let's assume an 1,800 square foot house, that would be an $1,800 adequate facilities fee on that house. Half of that amount would be due in permit issuance. For your county, that permit issuance, you handle the permit issuance. For the occupancy certificate, that comes from the state fire marshal's office. The state fire marshal's office already works with other counties that do not have a structured county planning department to handle this, so they're familiar with this process. We're not creating something new or new process. There are already systems in place that we would just fall into as a county. So you'd get half of the amount to do permit issuance, and the other half would be due before the occupancy, the certificate of occupancy would be given over to the individual. State fire marshal's office would assist with that, or if it's a mobile home, that's Middle Tennessee electric membership. This $1 per square foot fee can increase 10% every four years, take a review and determine if you need additional funds, and it can come in every four years. This does not apply to public buildings, places of worship, agricultural buildings, disaster repair, if you've had something, somebody, tornado or something come through and destroy homes. The replacement of those is not affected by this. It does not affect 501(c)(3) buildings or anything that's determined to be a live distress or urban renewal zone by the federal government. Cannon County doesn't apply to that, but that's one of the exceptions in there. And with a review of what is happening here in Coffey, I'm sorry, Cannon County, and coming from Rutherford County, it is conservatively estimated that that would be a $4,000 annual review for Cannon County. And I will stand for questions. I know that's a lot to throw out.
Just from a procedural standpoint, it hasn't come before the commission. Why is it due for a resolution?
Correct.
So this 20, so it's a 2,500 square foot house, and that's $2,500, what's that going to do?
That all this goes to capital, capital expenditures for the school system.
Which means what?
It goes to your school budget.
So it goes to the budget? Can they, what can they do with it?
It has to go towards capital expenditure. So it would have to be roof repairs, new buildings, I'm assuming debt service.
So do we control that?
After the conversation I encountered earlier today, I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer that question.
It's camera expenditure for education. Yeah. Which follows the school board, right? Well, but we appropriate books. So if we don't want them built, then they don't get booked. Same thing we got right now, wheel tax, correct? Okay. I mean, what's the purpose of having a wheel tax if we're not going to do that? Why would we do this? I'm going to charge a fee, $2,500 for a house, and then turn around and not let students use it after I told them the students that's their money.
This fee would...
But I've got a question. Well, they don't even have to get a permit if they have to build a mobile home, do they?
Yes.
I don't believe they do here.
Against your good occupancy.
They will with zoning.
Section 8 describes the...
Our zoning policy ties in with the county law, the board's on the bills, however the court process is, we'll have our first board on the bill. So, yes, this is...
If there's a process missing currently, we will make sure it's implemented. And since this has to be voted on twice, if there are questions that I don't have the complete answer for like that, I'll have those by the next meeting.
This is tied into the zoning resolution that's passed by reading by. That's how I... It just sort of comes in here. You look at section seven, eight, nine, it's basically a moral procedural thing for zoning, zoning. Now, as far as the money goes, you have to go to school, school.
School projects, two buildings.
And here's something to consider when you look at things like this that have dedicated expenditures. This eliminates the need for some of your general fund dollars to have to go towards that.
And the money be used for county capital expenses, new sewer lines, new...
It has to be education capital expenditures. Now, the county has a education debt service?
We did.
But that would apply also. I just got the nod from the...
No, I was just confirming.
Okay, he's confirming that you have. That's education capital expenditures.
So therefore, you can use the money to pay off the debt.
And it would free you of your general fund dollars.
Right.
It's essentially...
If you're using general fund dollars to pay education debt service.
Well, it's wheel tax.
But you may have future with growth. You may have to. This is a, this is a way, an additional way to keep from dipping into your general fund dollars to pay for growth. You've got $2.4 million coming down in roof repairs.
Well, that's fine, that's all we have to say. And I thought we ought to know that it's a two-thirds majority vote, and it has to be done twice.
Has anybody looked at the census number, 13,000, 890,000?
14,000 is roughly there.
And 2017, it said a 14,216 feet in this county. 14,216, anybody want to guess what they're predicting for 2025 in this county? They're predicting 14,316. Boy, that's a lot of growth. And by 35, 35, I think U.K. Knoxville is only predicting a 5.
And in my way, and one way I look at it too, Russell, I'm thinking about is if you add a dollar per square foot, they won't move here, and they slim her down to, and make yield growth, fear.
Well, we rejected a, what is, what was the other, the impact?
Impact fee.
We rejected impact fee. I was a realtor during the time, and it was the aw most thing that ever was, it was going to keep people away. But the deal is, is that here we are, many years later. We've got some, you know, we've got some new subdivisions around, but we have infrastructure now that won't support anything. And, you know, we got, we've got roofs that need to be...
We've got two subdivisions to play right now, I thought, at the day.
Right, and it's, it's, I'm hoping that things will turn around. If we get the county turned around and we get it headed in a positive direction, have it be more attractive to the people. And, you know, we've got a little place right down here, just like what she said, right down the road from Rutherford County. And one of these days, we're going to see it edging on down.
Well, you know, and the way I look at it, you talked about the 1,800 square foot house and $1,800. And $1,800 is going to be the difference between a young couple, already helping and not. If they want it, they can work extra to get that $1,800.
And you're talking about, but basically, you're talking about 200, like for a 200,000 square, I mean, a $200,000 house, you're talking about 2,000, and, you know, 1,000 and whatever it is. So you're not talking, when you start talking, and I'm not talking about, I'm one of the people that, I don't want to see taxes, I don't want to see anything, but some things are common sense, because if you're, you're going to have to fund the growth. We are going to have growth at some point in time. We've got growth, it's just, problem is, is people are moving in and then they're moving out.
Is there tax associated here?
I'm talking about future, I'm hoping future.
Does anybody know how many houses will build fast here in this county?
Yes, I think the number was 68. I think it's only, whenever we did the movies before, it broke down, but we have a century that we've got time for.
You have to go down the first, and you should build a lot of...
What is that, what's the average cost of a house?
Well, the average home in Cannon County, cost wise, is about 140, 150, so about 1400 per square foot. Say a hundred dollars per square foot per home.
Yeah. But section seven here says such funds shall be exclusively for the purpose of funding capital expenditures for education, including the retirement of bonded indebtedness, the need for which is reason related to population growth. The district here is hereby directed to deposit such revenue into education debt service fund. But on one hand, we're sitting here saying that our student enrollment is going down, and we're complaining about not having enough in the middle kids. And then we'll turn around and charge the taxpayer money to build a house so we can put money in the fund when we're losing students. I mean, how is that even logical?
It's logical, logical, because at some point in time, I'm hoping everything's going to turn around.
Well, I hope we have a gazillion dollars in the bank, but I mean, the reality of that is it's not happening.
Well, we're doing...
The reality of your argument is we have a lot of school buildings that are...
I know, but if you and you both have advocated that we closed them, okay, which, you're wanting to give them money to repair schools that they're going to close?
No.
Okay, then I can't follow your argument, so...
If I could add some, if I could add some numbers to this. You mentioned 68 new homes last year. If we're looking at 1,500 square foot, that's $1,500 cost, that would have generated $102,000 for Cannon County debt service, capital expenditures for public school system. The property tax rates, the value of land here is so attractive to folks coming out of Rutherford County. The growth is coming here. I could have told you 20 years ago in Rutherford County that we were this nice little sleepy little town. I can't go anywhere in Rutherford County now that a farm is not developed into a subdivision, or there's not two houses, twin or houses going on in fields that my husband used to play in as a child. It's coming, and I suggest you be prepared for it, instead of trying to play catch-up and go, dang it, I wish we did when it was five years ago, now we've got 100,000 homes here. I wish you 100,000 homes.
And especially with this new zoning law we got, realtors are going to have to feel that here. They're going to enjoy ever upon they put a...
Mayor.
The new zoning, yeah. Wow, that was...
I said, go ahead. You said there were two subdivisions coming in. Do you have any idea how many houses are planned?
As a matter of fact, I talked to the realtor today and had a conversation, concerned he didn't go for the board's on the field, and look at that and see what he's planning. But he is developing, I think part of it is already in residential, but another part is in agriculture. So that's, that's kind of the fact, though, codes are board compliance officer, I would know about that. So there is some language that I'm in the book for the build subject.
I just know where we are today in finances, in our population, in our schools, because we have failed to plan. Failed.
Just, just got to be right here?
No.
No.
Can we, can we try, yes, and check into this and think about this, and still button it down, because I'm not ready to run this.
One of the reasons I moved it to the end. I will point out it will require two votes, two separate meetings, and anything that comes, two thirds vote, yes, sir. Anything that gets a building permit from now, at the time this is implemented, is not counted in it, so it will grandfathered over the old law.
Yes, sure. Yes, yes, sure. It would appear a dollar per square foot for heated and cooled, it's a new residential.
Right.
And then you're saying a dollar per square foot for the mobile homes. Is this what's done in other counties? It would appear that there should be some difference there. What's being done in Wilson, Coffey, and Bedford County? Are the mobile homes and residential homes charged the same?
I have a copy of the resolution that passed Bedford County. It is a dollar per square foot for all of these entities listed here.
It's not tied into the cost from the home.
It is not tied into the cost.
It's just a dollar per square foot.
It is not based on the value. It is a fair and equitable tax charged to a home builder on the size.
It's an impact fee.
It is an impact fee. Currently, your homeowners here, your farmers here are paying for all the growth that has come and will continue to come. The goal is simply to try to make this something where, again, it's not a property tax increase, it is something that the growth pays for itself.
How would you treat current homes that resell?
This is not a transfer fee. This is only going to apply to new homes, new apartments, new mobile homes. And again, there are exceptions for the places of worship, the 501(c)(3) things along And again, there are exceptions for the places of worship, the five oh one C threes, things along that line, and it does not apply to commercial. That concludes my presentation, I appreciate each and every one of you for your time, patience.
Thank you for your work.
You're welcome, it won't be the last you see of me, I have more reports to come back. But this should be the bulk of the wonderful, this-
Let's take a five minute break, and we'll be right back.